Here.
Okay, motion to excuse Governor Keisling here. President.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
This is a public hearing for the activation of an accusation on the incursion of the law. Advice of the Attorney containing about point nine eight percent. So, is anybody here to speak?
Can we turn that up to the hospital? If that's possible.
Anybody here to speak in favor or against the accusation? Okay, see you then. So, move.
Sir.
Sir President.
Yes.
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 For a yes to adjourn the call.
The first, the first one, what is it? What has it? This is.
And kids.
Jacked by David right across the street.
Peters out here.
Exactly. Can they support for?
Yeah, that's a board.
That's a board.
Huh?
No. I knew it. I'm going to go to the house because the shell is dead. And she pretended.
That was really brutal.
Drew.
Yeah, but then the retired man lived in that big house across the street.
He isn't good.
Drew.
He got killed today in Monroe County. I'm surprised they didn't know. In former asylum, it's a big traffic gap. He missed the curb. Didn't have a seatbelt on. Apparently ejected him halfway. He had his. No, I think it was, he was in a pickup. I thought the money had a moment of silence.
And high school. So, he had a Chinese culture. Finally, I'll tell him.
We're ready.
Thirty, thirty-six.
Okay, welcome everybody to follow our council meeting for Monday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Hope you pray. Anybody out there want to do the prayer this evening? Thank you on behalf of all of Gallagher tonight. Thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us in our community. Lord, thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing this responsibility. Give us the courage, the determination, and the compassion to govern the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Lord, please bless those people that are here tonight, bless those people that are not here tonight, and their families. We ask that you help us make the best decisions we can possibly make for this wonderful community. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Beth, please hold.
Sir President.
Here.
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 You have a motion to excuse Governor Keisling and President Trump. So, move.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Fox. Minister of Defense, you know, we had a tragic accident yesterday. If you want to talk about that.
Yes, one of our fire paramedics, Drew Rhodes, was in a motor vehicle accident last night and died from injuries from that accident. And you knew Drew, he was, you know, a guy with a lot of ideas. Zuberens, blood energy brought the city. Started here in nineteen ninety-nine as a part-timer and Mayor Sherman in full-time in two thousand fourteen. He was one of our first combination employees. He also was a special police officer. He had his training for that, too. The Mayor Sherman saved her for that. So, all around a good guy, very unfortunate, tragic, we're all dealing with it. His parents, he knew them, longtime EMS volunteers for us. He helped his mom and his dad before they passed away. So, we can have a moment of silence for the family and in memory of Drew Rhodes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our condolences and apologies to your lost family and neighbors. With that, consideration of council meetings minutes of June twelve, two thousand seventeen, special committee of all meeting minutes of June twelve, two thousand seventeen, made the whole meeting minutes of June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, special council meeting minutes of June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, and financial statements made on that report for us. And a motion to approve is presented.
So, move.
Second.
Plante.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Flanders.
Abstained.
Sir President.
Abstained.
And Folds.
Yes.
Three yes to abstain to approve the above four statements.
Okay, so we are in the next to council meeting. July ten, I believe. Recognition visitors, meet please, accept the authority, change your name and the address. Please use a lot of time and please respect us or respect you in a nice, that's probably six portion of me. Appreciate it, thank you.
Talk on three oh seven, Prairie Street Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. There's a number of issues I would have a very concerned with. I'll start out with ordinance forty-four, forty-five. I do not believe this body understands that these minutes or these meetings are a historical record. They need to be safe and posted in perpetuity. Very important. And so, this is forty-four and forty-five. Order sixty-one, sixty-two, there's great amount of discussion about this. And Lord Renterfox will later disappoint that half the rule that less than a majority of the entire membership of Charter Review Commission vote to make recommendations to council. I don't understand why any of this discussion is going on. This is a handpicked group of people who are just simply making recommendations which council could just toss in the toilet. Now, Mr. Griffin picked up on Mr. Fox's arguments, stating again, why would you allow less than the majority of the entire membership? Why simply just the majority of those who vote or present and voting can't make this recommendation? It's beyond me. Mr. Griffin, even so far as to say this is unconstitutional. I'd like to draw your attention to all together. How many people you think voted in North Canton in the two thousand fifteen election? Do you think all over, all residents were voters, registered voters? We know that, but they aren't. Do you think all registered voters show up and vote? Obviously not. Fifty percent of the voters showed up and actually put you people in office. Mr. Griffin, would you say that's unconstitutional? So, your entire argument to change that section of the charter, demanding that the entire majority of the commission vote to make these recommendations to council doesn't hold. Fifty percent showed up to vote. You guys didn't scream and holler that it was unconstitutional there, did you? You got your seat. Okay. With that, let's move on to the charter of the agreement on the tax debate. I'm passing around to you, my comments to the Board of Education. I'd like to compliment you guys, demand that I'm inflexible, let's compliment. Let's give Mr. Lemon and Dehoff, and all his investors, they're obviously people who have money, who have plenty to invest. Just write off the three-year that have been awaited. That's almost, it's over a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That pays for the property that they don't, North Ridge Place on. What am I handing? You, you did a property free and clear. But terminate anything beyond that. I don't know why this city starts at the top and give away a business. Why don't you just give a little seed money to get started? A year, two years, three years. Mr. Folds, you're tickled to have that, those mobile homes taken out of there. Is it worth eight hundred thousand dollars to get those mobile homes out there? And to be honest with you, that was a nice little highlight at the center. The only thing that makes that horrendous was that horrendous murder. There are a lot of mobile homes up there. Are we going to spend millions more to make them disappear? Also, Mr. Sirretta, I believe you have conflict of interest on going beyond any of that. Your neighbor, Mr. Lemon, we know what discussions you had or haven't had. Your wife works for the schools. You have a conflict everywhere to something. So, I would urge you not to vote on this because if you do, I will be going to the ethics commission. You found out the hard way the last time I counseled you on a vote. They don't need to vote, be safe. Also, several of you have had campaign contributions from either Lemon or Dehoff, Mrs. Keisling, Mrs. Wareman, Mayor Hale, Mr. Griffin. It may not be totally illegal because that's how our democracy works.
Mr. Russell, please understand, you may take your seat.
It has the oppression of men providing.
Thank you for comments. I would ask that council administration just refrain from commenting on any of the meeting. This is our way of being, it's the way I like to do it. Okay, next up, anybody who wants to address counsel?
Before I get started, I have one thing I know is I hear about Councilman Jeff Peters and Mr. Andrew Frye and all the toots. They're always in assistance and they're resident zoning matter in that neighborhood. They've been very helpful in addressing my questions and concerns. All right, so thank you for the opportunity to speak publicly tonight. And I'd like to express my concerns regarding recent and future consideration of tax abatement that's activated in North Canton City schools. I'm a nineteen ninety-four graduate of the Ohio High School of Columbus, that's from nineteen ninety-five. I have three kids and a school district, one of the male school, my son, my mom, and my nephew. My husband is the commissioner of the football program I have seen on the local. And I also, when I hate you through a test like that, I say these things not to tell by the form of the safety, I'm not willing to hear about my three kids by kind of all these in our community. We chose the remaining where can't even the outstanding education or school district can afford them, and so I'm sure maybe you can as well. I was recently a member of the steering committee from school district to support the options hub approach our aging facilities. I had the honor of having come to the store at my table, even a community alum who's lovely white boy, still my son's favorite teacher for two years. We had an opportunity to discuss with parents and community members different ways that we might be able to meet the needs of the teachers too. We had lively, positive discussion that he made, we had a lot of great ideas that came out of that. It was encouraging to see both city and school representatives involved in that discussion. A common concern that came out in those meetings amongst community members was that perspective home buyers would overlook North Canton as our school district of choice and turn to others in the area of newer building technology. This is a common concern, I'm sure the city council had it as well, since it would also impact city income taxes collected for potential residents. Ultimately, the steering committee's recommendation was to tear down and build multiple buildings in the city with a portion of that money coming from the state. We knew that it would also mean that we would need to place an additional levy on the ballot this fall. However, the district is suffering financially at the Kansas State budget cuts. Having recently nominated several positions to meet the needs of operational cuts as well. The Board of Education passed a resolution last week, as most of you probably know, to place a levy on the ballot this fall. And that is going to include a brand-new income tax for all members of the school district, not just the state. In addition to that, there'll be a new bond issue that adds on to the existing property tax that did not set to expire until December two thousand nineteen. It appears as though this new income tax could be as high as three-quarters to one percent of all earned income. So, go ahead and take a moment and figure out what your share of that possible will be. Needless to say, the taxpayers of residents of the school district could face a pretty steep burden to fund these projects and keep the district as well financially, just prevent further effects. It's for that reason I stand here this evening, to express my concern regarding the slowdown between the school district, the developers, and the city for only fifty percent of minds that appear to have been properly withheld from our children in the school district. Fortunately for you, the school district passed that settlement agreement, three in favor, two abstaining. However, it's not lost on me that this appears to have created an unnecessary black cloud over the prospect of a levy to support our school district. With the district cut position, that should be a red flag and a reminder to every single candidate in the board. I have heard that there may be future consideration here at city council for additional abatements in the future. And I want to express that it is the opinion of so many in this community, not just myself, that it is not the role of the school district to play economic developer. That is the role of city council. And it is of the utmost importance now that that council looks for ways to do so without harming our school district financially. While the benefits may seem like a way to encourage economic growth, you know, it is currently coming at a expense of job cuts out of the city's largest employer, the North Canton School District. Imagine being a teacher or administrator and learning the school district can no longer afford your salary but was okay with struggling with the city on such a costly financial ladder. So, please accept my sincere statements this evening with consideration of the recent upcoming decisions. Send the right message to voters with their parents, teachers, and most importantly, our children who may grow up and choose to stay here like you and me and raise the next generation of North Canton residents. Show them that you value their decision to live in North Canton and won't be giving the school district or reasons to pass a law for costs to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to address counsel this evening?
Melanie Chable, Precedent Roy, Court of the Street. I'd like to clarify prior statements that I made about the minutes and archiving of planning and zoning. I mean, that's ordinance forty-four, forty-five, which I had incorrect the last time I spoke. I don't know if you have that new ordinance in front of you, there were some changes from the prior one. If you look at section one, the, does the term clerk refer to the clerk, person employed in engineering in permits? I assume that is not the council clerk, but it does not specify. Section one C, will the audio and transcript of the respective meetings be housed in the engineering and permits office until the appeal period has left? I don't believe it really says where those minutes will be housed. As you remember, I was very, very concerned about how they'd be archived and by whom so that citizens could access any of those and they'd know where to go. Section one D, who is responsible for archiving the video of both the planning and zoning meetings? And will that duty be added to his or her job description? I think it's important to verify who's doing what and not tie it to a person, but tie it to the job description or the job entity. And I don't think that it does that in the ordinance. So, I'm asking you to amend section one D to reflect whose responsibility is to archive the video of both the zoning and planning meetings. And perhaps somebody knows now who is archiving the meetings and so forth. So, I think I've asked repeatedly who is responsible for archiving and I still do not know. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else, Mr.?
Hillary Dresch, one oh two seven, East Maple. I've been attending council meetings now for about eight, ten years. And I've heard quite a bit about local government in North Canton. Seen some good government at work and obviously now the president, we're probably seeing some of the worst. I have met many fine people, some who share my beliefs, others not so much. And thanks to countless members of the military, law enforcement, living their disease, protecting our constitutional freedoms, I've been able to voice my concerns, opinions on questionable topics created by local elected officials. Tonight, many of us witnessed the swordman of our new police chief, John Minn. Here is a man inspired by his late father, nurtured by the likes of ex-police chief Mike Ryan and Mr. Lowler, who began at the very bottom and has now climbed to the top of his profession in his hometown. Hard, how? Hard work, training, and his desire to vote that extra mile. His remark is printed in the repository, really struck me when he said, and I quote, "It kind of gets to the point where you are looking at what more you can do." What more you can do, not what less you can do. Yet tonight, I'm certain each of you will vote yes on ordinances pertaining to section three oh seven of the city's charter, specifically the wording, "A member of council selected by council shall serve as not only members of the commission in advisory capacity and shall attend all meetings." Key words, "shall attend all meetings." This is to appease two councilwomen with the mindset of not what more you can do, but what less you can do. Once again, explain it to the community as to why an elected official assigned the duty as the voice of the people shall not attend every meeting as ordained by the charter writers some fifty years ago. What has changed? Why would a select group from the Charter Review Committee, a couple in particular, one who missed most meetings following the example of the councilperson who probably chose her for charter representation, be so adamant in eliminating the words "shall attend every meeting"? I was an appointee of the Charter Review Committee by Councilman Peters. And Mr. Peters, you're not here tonight, but thank you for the opportunity of being a part of local government. But I was astonished to see that at least half of the appointees probably had the Google directions to City Hall before the organizational meeting. Since then, I've probably seen what, one or two appointees attend the city council meeting. Mrs. Baldwin, unfortunately, your quest for sound, good local government, along with a few other Charter Review Committee members, your hands were tied. City council members, as you hope tonight on city charter issues, it's very disturbing to see your efforts and success in demeaning a ten-year government event in North Canton. Mr. Mayor, last week, your remarks brought out the best and the worst. Again, trust is at an all-time low. In just my quick fashion, I have the opinion that twenty-twelve tax abatement will cost the city somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. Then, your statement, "If we keep things the same in this city, the city will just die." Mr. Mayor, you are absolutely correct. If voters keep voting in the likes of yourself, Peters, Folds, Sirretta, Griffin, Keisling, Warren, and Plante, it will die. Thus, come late September, the month of October, Saturday mornings at eleven twenty-seven, East Maple, is going to be a busy corner because I'm sending right to my front yard as many posters and an information table. an information table for anybody wishing to stop by and see and hear, listen to the ills of this city government.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Rita Paul, Review, Second Circuit Street, Southeast North Canton. I have just two questions. One, could someone tell me when is the housing council scheduled to meet? And two, will all members of that council be free of conflicts of interest regarding the developers of Northridge?
Anybody else like to address counsel? Thank you for your comments this evening. So that will end the whole business. First up, ordinance forty-three, date 2017. Got a motion to read by title on a third reading, ordinance number forty-three, date seventeen.
Some move.
Corvett?
Yes.
Yes. Saredd?
Yes.
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number forty-three, 2017, and ordinance accepting the allocation of the annexation of certain two or three and planning project in the area of the town of Walsh. Won't serve annexation continuing the 0.892, acres of land or less to the city of North Canton.
Thank you. Excuse me, it's not here, but as we know, there's two lots that we're bringing in to be annexed with Walsh University, and it sits north of Billingsburg and just west of Preston. So it's a welcome addition to the school. Any comments from anybody else? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Folds, how could this be a third reading when we just had the public hearing?
You're out of order. Thank you.
Shouldn't that be a first reading?
We had two previous readings, but please do not speak out from the audience anymore.
We just had a public hearing.
Please do not speak out unless you remove yourself when we change. Thank you. As I said, do I have a motion to adopt the third reading? Second.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number forty-three, 2017.
Thank you. Got a motion to second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number forty-four, date 2017.
Some move.
Second.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number forty-four, 2017, and ordinance of amendment 145, having permission specifically 1.1, 0.1, transcription and distribution of minutes of the classified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Thank you. Chairperson Martin?
This is a third reading. We've talked about this numerous times, and the reasons for it essentially all came out this week. Bill Klein, who was the chairperson of the zoning and local standards Board of Appeals, has explained his rationale again for this. He was the one that recommended it, and then we talked about it a couple of years ago and decided to bring it back. Melly wrote a couple of questions, and Tim or Mike, do you have some answers for those?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, referring to the planning commission clerk.
Right.
And to the clerk for the planning commission and for the zoning and local standards Board of Appeals. There's a clerk for that as well.
So she would then be responsible, and I think we talked about training her.
Correct.
Audio and video.
Clerk is responsible right now for the meeting minutes.
And then would?
Let's live it just a little bit.
I'm the planning commission and Jessica. For the zoning board.
Okay. And then, any house in the engineer's office?
Yes, the clerk is responsible.
Okay. Last week, we talked about a couple amendments as well for this, and we talked about a time limit for how long we can keep these. And we put in there twenty years. Bill Klein, we were going above and beyond, he suggested three years, kind of based it on what the court systems have, and what are these going to keep in twenty years? Any other comments?
I mean, that's long enough, and maybe I'll play the archive. Like, how do we get a soul record? Do we know how that records how, like, the audio?
Right, just how we can do it right now. Do you know how we can look right now? The clerk has the minutes and maintains the minutes, so the clerk will be responsible for the record.
So it's like backed upon a court of advice?
Correct. There's the audio, and there's the video.
And I'm thinking of something digital.
Okay, Pat, you should have checked the digital format and the T-file extension, which you backed up to the file.
That's how we're pointing right now. It's no different, except we're stating time limits.
Okay, so we got twenty years. It's a cloud, it's off-site, basically.
Correct.
So is that as good as history as we have?
A big part.
Is that as good as history, as much history as we can get by doing it this way? This is great, right?
Yeah.
A good, safe way to control it and.
I don't know if there's a better way.
Okay, fair enough.
It's electronic, so that's the standard right now. So I'm not sure if there's another way.
And we talked to all the people who are doing recording, people on the commissions. And ultimately, it's really moving forward and we're going to be efficient.
And to clarify the third question, Pat, you've been instrumental in making sure that the technology is up to date, but ultimately, the responsibility is the clerk's, I think. Is that right? So although you've assisted them in that process, and it is kind of a responsibility of each of us as local officials to make sure that we're meeting our obligations, the buck stops at the clerk's office. Is that correct?
Correct. The clerk is responsible for meeting minutes. Clerk is responsible, essentially, you have the chair that runs the meeting, but your clerk is responsible for seeing that those administrative duties are completed, so that agendas go out, so that minutes are completed, provided to those planning commissions of your city council. There's absolutely no difference in what we're doing right now. If you're not questioning what we're doing right now, then I hope that you're comfortable with what we're doing. We have a digital audio, we have a cassette audio, and then we have a digital video. So we're saving three minutes.
And several minutes. As we talked about.
Yeah, several minutes, and maybe when necessary.
So if I get it right, what we're saying is we're doing more.
No, you're right.
We're doing more than we've ever done before. Is that the amount of spending period of time? For twenty years. So is there any question or have you?
Period of time, and they're going to be recorded, and we've added an additional element of capture by having the video too. So we have more of a record than we've ever had.
And is there an option, just a little one, to have a transcript with the amount of knowledge it's going to cost to have a transcript?
When you think about a little cloud, you know, a number of local subdivisions, even though they report their meetings, historically, they're on cassette tape. Cassette tapes warp, and when you go back to planning after several years, they may or may not be working in the way that they should be. And then also, they may not be secure, you know, so if there was a flood or a fire of some sort, it could be destroyed. But the cloud really is the best available technology to save the actual meeting, the recording of the meeting, and it's off-site. So to my knowledge, there is no greater technology available than storing the recording of meetings on a cloud, and we still have the digital backup here locally, so can't really do. This is the best available technology that we've had in the history of the city.
Okay, so it's interesting.
To put it in perspective, just a couple of years ago, for your committee in the whole meeting, it's made your time period to hold that, just had several minutes, was one year. And so those that say, "Wow, this council is not progressive, it's not doing new things, it's not improving things," are not that made the difference. The committee in the whole meetings are innovative, and they're saying three ways. And now, for the planning commission and zoning board appeals, we're stating we're going to hold that for twenty years. Some of us won't be here, and that's not the true statement.
Thank you. Thanks.
I appreciate your technology advances to all this, and I'll probably be able to serve where it is, so that's okay. Motion to adopt a third reading, ordinance number forty-four, dash.
Some move.
Second. Are we going to move to amend the ordinance?
No.
I don't think we amend it.
We don't need to.
I think we can.
If there was a previous experience. I'm sorry.
My second. Folds?
No.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
And Saredd?
Yes.
Or yes, one no, to adopt the third reading of ordinance number forty-five, 2017.
Thank you. Your motion is second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number forty-five, dash, 2017.
Some move.
Second. Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number forty-five, 2017, and ordinance of amendment 145, zoning ability standards, Board of Appeals specifically 145.01, transcription and distribution of minutes of the classified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Chairperson Martin?
So it's basically the same thing we just talked about, transcription of minutes, and how we can do a summary, digital, audio, video. And again, if there is any discussion on it, I'm going to turn it off.
Second.
Corvett?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
No.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Or yes, one no, to adopt the third reading of ordinance number forty-five, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Your motion is second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number forty-six, dash, 2017.
Some move.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number forty-six, 2017, and ordinance of amendment 24, otherwise in power of ordinance number thirty-six, 2012, police personnel ordinance as mentioned, to remit the classification of police patrolmen to police patrol officer full-time, or police patrolmen special to police patrol officer special for the full-time officers.
Okay. Fr. Peters is here, but as it reads, that's the change in it, and so there's not any comment, so a little promotion to adopt.
Some move. Second.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
And Waring?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number forty-six, 2017.
Thank you. Motion is second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number forty-seven, dash, 2017.
Some move.
Second.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
And Saredd?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number forty-seven, 2017, and ordinance pretty confirmed that it's a non-exclusive agreement, known as special number 9208010 and 9208015, and the Department of Law Number 408, Law Number 71794, and 71235 between the city of North Canton, Non-Hypertropical Corporation, Ranty, and Most Reverend George B. Murray, S.J., Bishop of the Roman Catholic Church, appearance now trustee creator.
Sure you know Chairman Fontaine?
That's the one we talked about several times, and it's where the decor effects went up, that's just giving us the right to do that. I've taken care of it, it's already done, it's been a while.
Right.
So I hope that we go ahead and wrap up.
Good for you, sir. Thank you.
Second. Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
And Folds?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number forty-seven, 2017.
Thank you. Your motion is second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number forty-nine, dash, 2017.
Some move.
Second.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number forty-nine, 2017, and ordinance authorized in Georgia, by means of the city of North Canton, to establish a capital project reserve fund by number 335 to accumulate resources for the future architectural assets.
Chairman Gray?
As we talked about before, one of the things that we wanted to do is incentivize departments saving money if they don't use dollars any year, so we don't have to pump up their budgets. Not that anyone would ever do that, of course, I'm certainly not making that allegation. But we're allowing them to continue to save about any year to year, was one of the four grounds innovations that she brought to us. We're very supportive of that. Any comments on that? We've been, I think it's a great move forward and something that will save tax dollars for larger capital projects, so I would move it's approval.
Second. Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number forty-nine, 2017.
Thank you. Your motion is second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number fifty, dash, 2017.
Some move.
Second.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Waring?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number fifty, 2017, and ordinance authorized in Georgia, by means of the city of North Canton, to establish an unplanned monies fund by number 874, the whole unplanned monies in trust for a period not easy high years, at which time the unplanned money shall accord to the general fund.
Again, this is an effort to clean up the books, to make sure that we have unplanned funds separated from the general fund, and that becomes true as a purpose. I would move it's approval.
Second.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
And Saredd?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number fifty, 2017.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number fifty-four, dash, 2017.
Some move.
Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
And Folds?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number fifty-four, 2017, and ordinance to provide for an election on proposed amendment to Article Two, Section 2.05, legislative procedure of the hypertonicity of North Canton.
Chairperson Martin?
So this is an ordinance that we made along the ballot, and it was what we thought of for the change in the charter, the last round of voice vote, for council members to present the meeting and reservations and complaints. But we don't vote in this session, and we don't.
Second.
Griffith?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number fifty-four, 2017.
Thank you. Your motion is second read by title on a third reading, ordinance number fifty-seven, dash, 2017. Oh, fifty-six, please.
Some move.
Fifty-six.
Second, fifty-six.
Waring?
Yes.
Saredd?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Griffith?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only, the third reading of ordinance number fifty-six, 2017, and ordinance to provide for the election on proposed amendment to Article Three, Section 3.072, by permission of the charter of this city of North Canton.
Yeah, so again, we talked about this, and really, the reason about this one is now the director of engineering, the permits, people that most certainly should be at those point meetings are now needed to be there. And we did take out, I think, one of the last sentences from the council committee, And we did take out, I think, one of the last sentences from the council committee, and we'll be there as advisor role, um, director of operations, and then these two. So it would really make improvements, we've standardized the wording between all of them, so that whether you're a member of this committee or that committee, everybody has the same requirements.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any comments?
No, that sounds good.
Good. Thank you. Motion down.
Second.
I can make it, I guess.
Did you make it?
I guess I did make it, so I remember Sir Reddick.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Waring?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number fifty-six, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Now, the motion is second read by title and a third reading of ordinance fifty-seven dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the third reading of ordinance number fifty-seven, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance to provide for an election on proposed amendment to article three, section three point zero seven three, surveying building standards for the appeal of the charter of the city of North Canton.
Chairperson Mark.
Again, this is very similar to our planning commission, and the reason about this again is we've got the director of engineering permits, and again, everybody will be in place and attend meetings and everything else that's very similar. So I think it's a really good change again to this ordinance. So I would move it to approve.
Second. Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
And Folds?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number fifty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thank you. The motion is second read by title and a third reading of ordinance number fifty-eight dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Griffin?
Yes.
Waring? Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the third reading of ordinance number fifty, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance to provide for an election on proposed amendment to article three, section three point zero seven three, surveying building standards for the appeal of the charter of the city of North Canton.
Chairperson Mark.
Yeah, this just talks about people who are appeals, and it's really well represented. They did a really nice job. I understand and clearly see before, and now it's very easy. There's three different letter numbers, and just a nice job, so.
Thank you.
No other questions? I'll be going back.
Second. Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number fifty-eight, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. The motion is second read by title and a third reading of ordinance number fifty-nine dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Waring?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the third reading of ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance to provide for an election on proposed amendment to article four, section four point two three fiscal year, the tax budget of the charter of the city of North Canton.
Thank you, Chairperson Mark.
This just says it goes along on a calendar year, and Laura's approved, and there's no discussion in the chat.
Second. Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thank you. The motion is second read by title and a third reading of ordinance number sixty-one dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
And Folds?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the third reading of ordinance number sixty-one, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance to provide for an election on proposed amendment to article six, section six point zero four, charter review of the charter of the city of North Canton.
Chairperson Mark.
Well, this was out of recognition for the charter commission to be able to have a election for a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Is there any further discussion in the chat?
Second. Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number sixty-one, two thousand seventeen.
It's in sixty-one or sixty-two.
Sixty-one.
Okay. Thank you. The motion is second read by title and a third read of ordinance number sixty-two dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Griffin?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the third read of ordinance number sixty-two, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance to provide for an election on proposed amendment to section, article six, section six point zero four charter review of the charter of the city of North Canton.
Okay, thank you. Chairperson Mark.
Uh, so there was a lot of discussion on this, and it came up because there were confusion on how this is to work, on whether we take the majority of those that are present and then we break into the council. So this allows for the charter commission, so this allows for the hiring of the charter commission. So if there's room for discussion in the chat.
Second. Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Waring?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the third reading of ordinance number sixty-two, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Motion is second read by title and a second read of ordinance number sixty-three dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance authorized in director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids for the right of walking path reconstruction phase one project in the city of North Canton and authorizing the mayor upon board control approval and control contract for the project and the charter to be in emergency.
Thank you. That's one more. Give someone else a chance.
I know.
Um, as you know, it's, uh, the walking path, which is a very asset to city of North Canton, and this is phase one, so we have two phases. We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in equity, so we hope to get this on the bid, believe me, this year. Any other questions, Travis?
It's good news.
Second. Thank you.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
And Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine to adopt the second reading of ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand seventeen.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So it's a second reading, but it's on emergency, but this one and the next one. So we're taking a third reading. You may have to wait to get the bids until a third reading is done?
Yes, just to pass it on emergency, that's being, it'll be quicker. But yes.
So that's okay. So just.
Yes. As long as on the third, third one it's emergency, then we can go right ahead, right after.
Okay. I just can deal with that, but it's a basic, some big projects where I'll start counting good people, so, okay.
Yeah, it'd be a nice project for, to look for those. There's a lot of traffic control there.
Yeah.
It's like you're in a park lately, it's like, it's a nice.
They like that.
It's very nice that much.
It is. Good point.
But thanks for your concern.
Okay, motion is second to read by title and a second read of ordinance number sixty-four dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. We didn't adopt the second reading of.
Oh, we did. I thought we did.
We said, I had a question after the fact.
Yeah.
That's a nerdy question.
Yeah, we don't want to, like, let's do it again.
Let's do it something we haven't done tonight. Yeah, there's a lot of legislation there. She thought. I'll second it.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Can I change my vote then?
By yes to adopt the second reading of ordinance number sixty-four, sixteen twenty, two thousand fourteen, seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen.
Okay, now sixty-three, so we have to go after sixty-four. Right? Motion is, uh, motion is second read by title and a second read of ordinance number sixty-four dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance authorized in director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids for the Eastwood Park tennis court replacement project in the city of North Canton and authorizing the mayor upon board control approval to enter into a contract for the project and the charter to be in emergency.
Thank you. Uh, as you know, those transports are in addition to the full rehab, they're now new base of pavement passing, and it'll be a nice transport for the next twenty, twenty-five years for public to enjoy. Any other questions?
Just a pleasure, Dr. Gray.
Yes.
Any other comments, any concerns?
That's great.
Yes.
So move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the second reading of ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thank you. The motion is second read by title and a second read of ordinance number sixty-five dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance authorized in director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids applying the specifications down on file in the justice office and authorizing the mayor upon board control approval to enter into a contract for the Brook Street Sanitizing Sewer Replantment Project at a total cost of eighty-two hundred thousand dollars and the charter to be in emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Sir Reddick.
Uh, this is what it says, Sarah, we discussed this in committee, and he's been invited, so I move that we pass the second reading.
Second. Folds?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
By yes to adopt the second reading of ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thank you. The motion is second read by title and a second read of ordinance number sixty-six dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
And Folds?
Yes.
By yes to read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand seventeen, and ordinance authorized the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a settlement agreement between the city and the North Canton City District Board of Education regarding a dispute complaint involving a community reinvestment area tax amendment for certain rural property located in thirteen zero three and thirteen zero five North Bridge, North Bridge in the city of North Canton.
Thank you. As we know, um, most of the, my office over here last week, Massett six zero, and the school board has passed this at every meeting last week, so, remember, Chairman, if you have any comments?
Yeah, a couple things. I wasn't here for, uh, the discussion. First of all, um, I know there are people concerned, as I live in North Canton all my life, and that, uh, I was a part of the school for fifteen years, and I happened to live next to, uh, one of the developers and my wife who owns the school, but I, I went to the law director on this some time ago, because this is a concern of any contact of interest, and you showed me I do not have a contact interest in that, so people know that, and, uh, and we can move forward with this kind of thing. Um, but I think this, this whole agreement isn't win-win, it's exactly what we should have. I mean, we had an issue here. We had a problem with this thing, and it was out of our control, we fixed it, and we moved on. So, so parking and the dead horse was rare, and you had to change it, we moved forward on the thing, and I thought we had done a nice job of doing that. We've gotten with the, the school, and I thought Tim's had a real nice job with us being the middle person between these two entities, and that wasn't easy at all, um, because I think we had, we had really good schools to start with, first of all. And if we, we always kind of rate them, well, Marshall's better than the others. But if you took a lot of schools to start with, and you put them on a place, they would rate as high as any of them. So, so when I say some of these, these words, I don't want anybody to get mad, but number one reason why people moved to North Canton is our schools, but right up there with it is our safety and our community. Community is a big deal. You take your community out of this, and all you have is another township school. And I know that. I've been around for a long time, doing, doing ledges and so on. People come here because they want that, that, that kind of arms wrapped around from the community. So if you don't keep the community up, that moves away, and that really deteriorates the school at the same time. So keeping the community up is a major issue here. And I know we're talking dollars, and we're, we're talking this over here at the, the trailer park, which was paying, and I may not be exactly correct, I mean, I'm just a finance guy, but I think we were paying, there were seven thousand dollars we were collecting on property tax debt. Now it's sixty thousand dollars, and we had a trailer park that really was one of the biggest ice stores in town. And then, and I, you know, what really transpired over there, uh, we're glad that they sound over there anymore. So, so that's, that's a win for us as far as us now. The time for splitting this now, so each person will get, um, twenty, thirty, forty thousand bucks, I would say, somewhere in that range kind of thing. So schools getting that, and after ten to twelve years, they're going to get a hundred percent of, of the. So that's surely a lot of everything giving the seven thousand dollars, even if they continue to go over and over and over again. So I think there was an issue here, we resolved it, this is what community people do, this is what leaders have to do to move forward. So I give everyone a big kudos on that, this is how it works. And that's why I want to introduce to the school board, which we'll see, that this is a good thing for them. Outside of the fact that AKA must not like all CRs, and I can't explain why in that sense. Now, let's talk about developers. We need developers in this town, and Basuwa was a developer. He created this town. So people, when, when you say about the developers, you know, they're trying to, to bring people in to build so we can collect income taxes and property taxes and that, and we're talking about London D Hop here, where it's, it's taking some, some piss in the paper. But they're good people. They're very good people. They've created every corner of this town, they've done some good things on it. So, and they live here, and they make their offices here. So to disparage anybody about developers is really, you know, you're going down the wrong road there. So we need that kind of thing. So I'm for this. I think where the situation was, it's a win-win, and we should pass this thing as fast as we can, and we can't do it in an emergency. So they collect their share. That's all I got to say on that.
Great comments. Anybody else?
We've all weighed in.
We've all weighed in once we've done the same thing.
We were waiting, we were waiting.
Thank you. That doesn't happen to you very often.
I may, I can... I don't want to overshadow Councilman's comments. They're very comprehensive, and they touched on very key subjects here. One area I just wanted to touch on, because we did have speakers here, we didn't touch on that, and for very good reasons, some residents have come and offered what they believe an agreement should be, how this should be resolved, and talking specific dollars and so forth. However, the Board of Education speaks through its board, and those individuals...
Is this a legal opinion?
Member Ozzy, excuse me. Chuck Ozzy, you are on the board, please. One more time, I'm going to ask you to leave. It will suck to me if you do. Thank you.
The, as I said, the Board of Education speaks on behalf of the school, and it has negotiated this agreement with the city. The city has negotiated an agreement with the developer. They, all parties were represented by council, and this is the result of negotiations over approximately eight months. So although some residents made some very good comments and expressed their concerns of what they believe the board should do on behalf of the school, it's decided. They asked the city to enter into this agreement, as the city asked as well, and the board has asked for, asking for council to pass it. The developer is waiting for us to pass as well. And once that's done, the transactions will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this deal. It's a great thing when we can all collaborate, and have a great solution to this, and like, and stuff. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you. The motion is second read by title and the second read of ordinance number sixty-seven dash two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second. Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Griffin.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand seventeen? An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton apply to enter into a settlement agreement between the city and the North Bridge Close LLC regarding a disputed complaint involving a community reinvestment area tax abatement for certain rural property located at thirteen zero three and thirteen zero five North Main Street, North Bridge, in terms of safety and emergency.
Thank you. Any other comments? Or anything?
No.
We had a meeting, and we know it's party agreement, so.
The system's a good companion, and just so there's no misunderstanding, there's agreement with the city and the school board, and an agreement with the developer and the city. There's, although each of the agreements refers to the other agreement, there's not a third. So there's two agreements, each referring to the other side. There's no phantom agreement.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
And Waring.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you. The motion is second read by title and the second read of ordinance number sixty-eight dash two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second. Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Sir Reddick.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty, two thousand seventeen? An ordinance authorizing a settlement of compensation advice of the city of North Canton to be appropriate for the appropriate resources of the general fund to the general fund account in the amount of seventy point thousand for the settlement of a disputed claim during the fiscal year ending December three thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Chairman Reddick.
The area is with the developer and the school's creative obligation on behalf of the city, as we discussed before, and the city corporations have fulfilled that obligation. I will move it through.
Second.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
And Folds.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of ordinance number sixty, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you. The motion is second read by title and the second read of ordinance number sixty-nine dash two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-nine, two thousand seventeen? An ordinance establishing the North Bridge Developer Payments Agency to permit the city of North Canton to collect payments from North Bridge LLC and disburse those funds to the city of North Canton, the North Canton City School District Board of Education as more fully described in the settlement agreement bound to ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand seventeen, and sixty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Chairman Reddick.
We've already agreed two funds tonight, so even three, I don't give a word in general. This is the fund created to collect the dollars, and all of it's in the application.
I will move it through.
Second. Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
And Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Griffin.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of ordinance number sixty-nine, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you. The motion is second read by title and the second read of resolution number seven dash two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Griffin.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the second reading of ordinance number, resolution seven, two thousand seventeen? A resolution on submission of request to the county of pursuant to the revised code section five seven zero five point zero three E to certify to the city of North Canton, the county of North Canton, as the city's taxing authority, the city's total prime tax valuation as subdivision, the total amount of revenue that would be generated for renewal tax of one point five mils pursuant to the revised code sections five seven zero five point one nine, five seven... zero five point one nine one, and five seven zero five point two five for the purpose of providing ambulance service and medical service for the and the city for a period of five years, taxure two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and commencing two thousand seventeen, first due in the coming year of two thousand eighteen, and you are the same to begin motions.
Thank you. Chairman Reddick.
We, as you know, have an EMS renewal on the ballot earlier this summer. In the event that it does not pass, we'll make sure that it's prepared for the ballot in November, although we anticipate the board will be passing. We need to initiate the process right now, which is what we're doing. So this is simply issuing this. Again, we confirm that if in fact the levy passes in August, we will not submit this as an addition to the board member. So I will move it through.
Second.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
And Waring.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of resolution seven, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you. The motion is second read by title and the second read of resolution number eight, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Sir Reddick.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the second reading of resolution eight, two thousand seventeen? A resolution on submission of question of a renewal of tax letter with the purpose of providing additional funds for the city's portion of ambulance service emergency medical services from the city of North Canton, the county of North Canton.
Chairman Reddick.
This is a companion piece to resolution number seven. I will move it through.
Second.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
And Folds.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of resolution eight, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you. That concludes old business. New business. The motion is second read by title and the first read of course number seventy dash two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the first reading of ordinance number seventy, two thousand seventeen? An ordinance authorizing director administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive this following specifications down on file in the Director's Office and authorizing the mayor of power of control approval to enter into an agreement for the purchase of two radio consoles who supply council radio equipment on the vendor award in the next year. The Ohio Cooperative Purchase Act.
Thank you. Chairman Reddick.
These are the radio consoles that we talked about, committed to last week. If there are no questions, I will move it through.
Second. And Waring.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
And Griffin.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of ordinance number seventy, two thousand seventeen?
Thank you very much. Your representative excellent justice is a small novel today. And some other work is what we do, and I applaud everybody getting confused and confusing, obviously, everybody.
Any comment? From that, yes, there is a concern that perhaps on ordinance sixty-six, two thousand seventeen, it wasn't clear which ordinance was being read. And like I said, there's no harm in doing it twice. There's no harm if it wasn't perhaps clearly communicated which ordinance. So if you would, if you would... To...
That's what you're saying. All right, let's do that. Let's go back.
I am twenty-five.
I am twenty-five. So the motion is second to read by title and the second read of course number sixty-six dash two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second. Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
And Waring.
Yes.
By chance, would you read by title only the second reading of ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand seventeen? An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton apply to enter into a settlement agreement between the city and the North Canton City District Board of Education regarding a disputed complaint involving a community reinvestment area tax abatement for certain rural property located at thirteen zero three and thirteen zero five North Main Street, North Bridge, in terms of safety and emergency.
This is where we're ever sure to be able to elaborate comments on this, we'll comment on it, so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Folds.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
And Sir Reddick.
Yes.
By chance, would you like the second reading of ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand seventeen?
Okay, thank you. We have, thank you, lower reports. Turn front.
I just want to say, after the public, the comments, again, this just, I just have to say this. This is my third year here now, so I'm going to use this camera, right, for council. So prior to me being part of the council, I would only see from their eyes. And I agree with a lot of things that they've said, because I didn't really know what Mr. Fox is doing. Didn't know if he's any good. Didn't really know what the heck you guys are doing, so as far as what's concerned, maybe you should all be tired. But let me just say this, after being here three years, and observing and seeing the ethics, integrity, and the hard work that all you put into it, and this is no BS, we have so many positive things going on, the little bit that I've seen. And Tim, I mean honestly, yes, you know, maybe you need to be a little more charismatic, maybe that's something that the school can polish up on. But the point is, you do your job very well.
Thank you.
You do legally is good, and you always give us good advice. So I always like to be China, as far as the council members go. I mean, obviously, we're not communicating enough to the public of what's really happening up here, because until I really got involved, I really didn't know what was happening here. So I just think, just a little bit of a bit together here, we got better ways of communicating for the public, but maybe they just don't know it yet, right? So we have two different ways for communicating on all fronts. And we have the Seven Twenty. Did anybody go to that this weekend? That was unbelievable.
Yeah.
I ran into Happy Guys there. We got Price Park, they're redoing Price Park. That's a huge benefit to our community. We got the Hoover Trail. Did you know about that? Over on Price Park. So from Stark State all the way south, coming across the bridge, we're going to have a ten-foot concrete path, five feet in from the curb. It's going to start any day. So that's coming all the way to Ziverditch. Now that's just phase. We have another phase to go. And that's going to eventually go through Price Park or tie up into the other trail. The other things are, is, and I'm sure your kind of reports talk about this, the streets and alleys are working overtime. We got the kids working this summer. I've never seen them clean up and work so well. They're painting the poles. They're cleaning the weeds. They're watering the clocks. They're doing stuff very well. City Hall's getting revamped, thanks to Mr. Diorio. He's all over this. We're getting our, we got our audio. We got a IT guy. We're going to be changing the website. We're setting up the judges now, and we're going to improve so much more, even with the way the package are for the building, the car parts, and the way things are being done. There's so much good going on. This needs to be broadcast. Every time there's a meeting, everybody needs to pick up and say whatever it is they want to say of what's going on so that people in the audience know what the hell's going on. And I'm just telling you right now, I'm sorry, I should have said that. Retract that. Sorry about that, Mr. Ozzy. But the point I was saying is, there's so much good here. We need to make sure we're echoing so that constituents know, so that they don't think we all need to be fired. We're doing great jobs up here. And just like I, like them, Mr. Tripp's smiling over there because he's enjoying it. And I might come to your house. I'm just telling you, there's so much going on here that you don't know because you're stuck out there. I'm telling you right now, there's a ton going on right now, and these people will echo it, and keep coming, and you're going to get, we're going to change you.
Next, next time. I appreciate you.
I'm sorry, it's my soapbox.
It's good.
Moving on.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. That's my report.
So I had written down some things, and I just took them all, but...
I'm sorry.
You were, no, you were, you said it way better. Your voice is going today. So I was at the Seven Twenty market as well, and the way the police handled the traffic and the control, and so many people were there. Not just from North Canton. I mean, that's a great thing. People come all over. Just really created some space, and everyone uses it for some other things, but it was just, again, a nice festival. And again, it was, it was on conversion, but it's best, which was a group of people that came together last year and started this festival because they're excited about North Canton, because they like it. They want to live here. So Brock, thank you for being here. We're excited to turn into a part of our new network. And like, the other day, when we were all questioning it about that Hard Road, and you gave a really great explanation, and then it went all out to all of us, because we forget what happens. And somebody tells us, well, two thousand twenty, well, that's a long way off right now, you know? And so for you to refresh us, great explanation, and Everhard will be done, and Whipple, and there aren't a lot of great things going on. You come in North Canton, it's exciting, even though it's so frustrating to see all the pilots. I mean, I hit my market every day, and I am like from four to two lanes in many, many areas. I have stopped, you know, at Walshen, and we can't go any further. But these are all great things because they're adding to our community. So it takes a little time for them to get there. The lawns are nearby. I just had to come up because I was down in that area, and I just can't believe how well people take care of things. So thank you all for homeowners, and you mentioned the Hoover Trail too, and I second that, so. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Member Reddick.
Just two quick items, a big one in the little line. I really appreciate a call from somebody who was very appreciative of the new bench that's in West Park. And I also want to appreciate it too, through little things that make a big difference. That's a mom who's been going to watch her kids play for ten years in that park, and she didn't have anywhere to sit, and now she does. And I hate to say how open-minded she is about that. And I know it pales in comparison to the thirty-nine items that we did tonight in a lot of ways, but for that individual person, it made a big difference. So I appreciate everybody, and I have sent a couple of emails too about that. And especially congratulations to John Menopin, to mention that. I think being a police officer is an extremely difficult job. It's one that I highly respect, and I would definitely not want myself. And I'm really glad that there are people like John who are willing to step up and take that job, and not just do it good, do it well. Many regrets to him being on the administration for finding somebody with as much integrity and qualities.
Well said. Thank you. Chairman Reddick.
Well, I agree with John Menopin, just the way he works and everything he's going to maintain and make things better. And Donna and Bert, proud of you. Keeping a record, jumping through all that good stuff. That's great. Keep that. There's just so much, because we all need to do. Absolutely. Sure, there's a lot of people that love it here, and a lot of those things are random, because of recent North Canton, because of that. I did get a call from the Community Guard Force, and they're, they're going to come up on July tenth, our next meeting, and give their kind of review of what's going on, their vision. They got things really organized, and I'm excited for them to just add another little link to Don's list on that. So we've got that down. Everybody put it on each other for July tenth, and then to give their presentation, and to see how far they can go. They have patients who have been putting one of these in their partner with the city. So that's really all I have for the recent.
Good. A couple of things from my end. I'm looking to, you know, I'm proud of any project we do in cities, especially Board one, I represent. I'm looking at a letter from Parkview that was sent out May twenty-second to start the process.
May twenty-second?
May twenty-second, and here we are, a little over month later, we're going to finish this tomorrow. What did they talk about, where we come from? Thirty days, six hundred thousand dollar project. Besides from the Seven Street project, when is that ever happened? We have two projects done for the Fourth of July, that means.
Four rebuilds.
Two rebuilds.
Not just three.
Yes, exactly.
I drive my bike on Saturday night, because I saw and heard all this noise.
Right.
They were working the road.
They were working the weekend.
On Saturday and Sunday.
And Sunday, I saw. So kudos to administration, our contractors that have the job, you know, we're getting things done. And appreciate your property values and show you that we're progressive city, because we're doing it without any tax, property tax afforded to the residents. We have the money to do it, because we know the importance of this, to keep our infrastructure strong. Members regarding to this, schools, it's our services, our parks, and what we spend on our parks, because you guys got involved, allocated more money to administration. I'm proud of it. So proud of that, because it's not typical to a lot of communities. They're struggling. We're making things happen, and it's best with the council, our law director, and our administration here, and all the people under there. So when you go to the bar, let me tell you, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for doing some hard work, for getting things done in this community. And I'm very proud of that. So that are well represented.
Yes, sir, just continued congratulations to John Menopin. All three candidates are certainly terrific job, and one of them, I think, would have been a great choice, but John actually achieved the highest rating score on the service examination, and... And, um, I, I think he was credit, it was mentioned earlier, the attention to detail that John portrays in his work. But to me, the quality that I see in Chief Minoff is, is temperament. That he, as the, the mayor had said, imagine a more stressful position. Not just the times that he wore the, you know, calls, but then as well as resolving things after the call. When you have to report and you have, uh, residents and witnesses and all of those, those things. From the, perhaps the height of what you would think would be happiness or excitement to the, to the, uh, maybe the lower level of a, of a very stressful, demanding situation. His emotions seem to change, uh, he just seems to be on an even keel. And it just addresses it with, uh, professionalism in that attention to detail, but the temperament. I, indeed, I think that's what sticks out and I believe he's gonna do a terrific job, just as, uh, the former chiefs has done. And we're all a better community to, to have here. So it was really nice to see the outpouring for, for him and his achievements, so I wish him luck.
Another thing too, Chief, uh, obviously he learns from a great business beforehand. Chief Grimes, who's been a great achievement, great administrator, so that's important, yet it's had to, and to your city too. So thank you for all that. My pleasure.
Thank you, I want to continue the theme of progress. Um, so I'll update you on what you think to work on. One is our wellness program, I mentioned that two months ago. Um, we applied for grant through PWC, so we'll wait to hear back on that. And then Debbie, the director of finance, has visited almost all of our departments. Um, and we didn't get as many signups as we hoped for, but we did get a lot of great feedback from our employees. And they told her two things. One was they didn't like our prices on our incentives. I thought someone did. So, uh, the price, the incentives were gift cards. Because one of the vendors that we're looking at, they had like an online mall, you could get gift cards and then there isn't, some people weren't into that. Um, and it benefits the employee to have that walk's work, but it also benefits the city because we can see a reduction in healthcare costs. So what they said was, we like to have three days off of work. We'd like to have bigger prices raffle off, you know, rather than small ticket items. So we're looking at ways that we can make that happen, um, even within, within that program. So we're.
Are, are the goals pretty high?
Oh, they're pretty high.
Maybe.
The incentive has to be, it's pretty low.
Yeah, it does, it does. But the other thing that they told us, and this really surprised me, I do not think this would be a comment, but they really wanted to see before they would sign up, a commitment from city leadership, that you were also involved.
Whoa.
Um, both council and administration and mayor. Um, and that you guys want to sign up and that you want to be committed to the program, because they don't want to put the work in and then it just not as well, so.
I'm sure.
That being said, here goes the finance, contract paper, sign up sheet, so we'll send that around. You can sign up, your spouse can sign up, and as soon as we can get a hundred people, we'll make it go. And we'll, we'll hope that we get that.
So if I already go to a place of exercise and some of the city people go there already, would that count?
That would count.
Okay. They are.
We'll see what you think.
Okay, that's just down, that's great, thank you for that.
So that's, that's the first project. The second project would be the city website, that was something in the budget this year, the, the council that asked to be worked on. Um, and early in the year, Mr. Grimes, Mr. Diorio, Michelle, Shannon, and myself, we looked for our own website. Came up with a listing that we don't love, and some goals that we had. In the meantime, off and on, Sean's been doing some research, looking at demos, giving proposals from a lot of vendors. And as so happens, the top vendor candidate that she came up with was also a vendor that Patrick had been looking into for another shop program.
Perfect.
So they kind of arrived at that same old two, which is great. We slowed down from that, and it was, it was wonderful. A couple of the things that we could do. Um, I know.
Rita or Chuck, you can please take that down. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Um, a few things that actually we could do with the website. It should address concerns that residents of that city, which is that, um, are cataloged, and that's been a constant complaint.
Chris, you may take that up and you can leave the call.
I have a right.
No, you don't have a right.
I do.
During the meeting, I.
I have a right.
That's what you wanted to do.
Actually, you wanna, you wanna be drawn, I'm gonna go, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna proceed to.
I have a right to show.
I'll pause the meeting, till we get somebody else here.
Do a rule public to pause the meeting.
You didn't throw out that kangaroo that was in here about ten years ago during your removal?
No, we're gonna do this. I'm not gonna, we don't need a motion, we're gonna wait until Mr. Osborne leaves the meeting.
You let this log record run this entire city?
Yeah, you're honest when you're out of order. Please leave the meeting.
Well, I have a right.
You do not have a right.
I do have a right, and I'll press it through the courts if you want to insist on this. You're trying to stop me from recording this a year and a half ago.
Somebody's coming up here right now, so please leave the meeting. We had a conversation last week about this and you had to push it tonight.
I have a right.
Please get this one out. Fortunately, this takes away from the good things in the news. I just don't, I just don't understand what we're doing for, so do you want to do that? Take the sign.
The handle, I'll take the sign. I'll come back and get the handle. Yeah, I'm here, you go, you go. Yeah, go back to that. After they intervene, so can you come out again?
I'll go with John, I'll go.
All right. Just push this little button right here. Your log record's on one side, okay?
I'm sorry, we're moving, I don't know, because there are a lot of things going on, so let me see. Let's get to that, I think people can report on that too.
All right, I'm wrapping up. Our website, we can enter our calendar, we can authorize five people about meetings, post the agendas more easily, this type of things. We can get our forms out there, permits, online payments. Um, we can have a social media feed, so we can get more information out of the community. So there's a lot of, they were very excited, so keep making progress.
That's you, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say to you before we run, we got our, um, finance reports, our bureau, finance reports again. And I just want to thank you all again for the quality and the comprehensive nature of those reports. You continue to do a really nice job with those. I'm sure everyone read the cover of the public, but one way or the other, it's really valuable information. And we can continue to work on it for the city because those people.
So, thank you. Member Griffin?
Uh, continuing on with Chief Minoff, uh, you know, it's a great pick. Uh, he's gonna continue, uh, I think we all can continue to sleep well at night and in charge. Uh, not to forget too, the two other, uh, police officers took that test for chief. Uh, I had the opportunity to give their scores, also come back and tell them who the mayor had chosen as the chief. And both of them are very professional about it and, you know, they were here tonight, one of the first couples to congratulate me. So, uh, they get along really well, the departments are professional, we're part of those folks down there. So it's continued going on. Those, those other two took the test, but they will help Chief Minoff whenever he needs to. And on a, uh, more sad note, Drew Rhodes, uh, his services will be Friday, uh, June thirtieth at the chapel. And coffee hours are between three and seven. There'll be short sellers, something like that.
And so also, I would like to comment on Drew Rhodes. And Drew Rhodes now was a high school, uh, just a great man. And he's actually, Drew was the first firefighter, paramedic, police officer that the city had. So you see a lot of cities that are going towards a trend of adding, uh, something out of the trade as a firefighter, as a paramedic, and then also as a police officer. So he was the first one that, that had all those qualifications, I believe also a fire inspector too. So he was really the most, uh, highly trained emergency, uh, personnel that we had, uh, in the city. And, uh, you know, it's, it's still just hard to believe, uh, that it had, you know. You can see the fire in the west department, particularly those that worked on the shift. You know, uh, aside from his family, their, you know, their lives were just dramatically changed. And also his, uh, his little boy that's eight years old. So, um, you know, uh, it's just a really tough time, a real sad time right now. Uh, but, you know, just like we always do, city work, can't people come together, uh, during difficult times? And we work together and we overcome, and that's what we're doing in this situation too. Um, uh, there is another, and this is a really important point. And, you know, we talked about the approach that we have of, uh, property taxes. And Chuck Osborne and, uh, and Rita brought her points and Melanie and also Holly about the property tax. Because it's not an easy, there is no easy way to keep businesses here and to incentivize new businesses to come. Because obviously, as Councilman Soretta had mentioned earlier to the meeting, there were three things that came up consistently in our surveys over the past nine years. And it's our safe community, city schools, and the third was, uh, was defined as our sense of community. And that's why my friends are a administrator, that best sign in his office that says, we are North Camp. It's something that's hard to define, but it really is, um, a tradition of excellence that the people that we have in here. Of course, we want the best schools, of course, we want the best police department, the best fire department, the best city services. And it's a continuous process. And, um, as we, as we work together with the schools to have the best schools, as we work with the administration council, have the best safety services, um, it's a process that we go through. But one area that we cannot forget is the role that the state of Ohio has. So I have in front of me, it's an urgent call that was sent out to all of the municipalities. Uh, the Ohio municipal opposes this action, it's House Bill forty-nine, which is in a conference committee. And what this bill does is it's going to empower the state to take our corporate tax. So we collect employee tax, so on employees, uh, businesses work in the city, we collect an income tax that comes to us. And we collected just over, what, in total, our income taxes, just over seven million this past year. There's also a corporate income tax. So when a business is in the city, when they make a profit, there is a corporate income tax that, that we collect from them. Last year, it was just over six hundred thousand dollars, okay? The state of Ohio right now is going to, they're not going to, they're gonna pass a law and it basically empowers the state, uh, to offer a taxpayer's option for the state of Ohio to cover the taxation, to collect and administer that corporate or net profit tax. Uh, secondly, it will eliminate the net profit sales throwback rule, which is another option that municipalities have. So essentially, a portion, from looking at the total of seven million dollars in income tax, roughly ten percent of that is going to now, if this rule passes, in the budget bill. Now, keep in mind, why is it being passed in a budget bill with the state of Ohio? It's being passed in a very, very, very large budget bill. It's slipped in there so that municipalities do not realize what state controls. It's a sneaky maneuver for the state of Ohio to collect ten percent of our local income tax and put it down in the authority of the state of Ohio, it's a long list. I just realized this today, because of this alert that came out. The decision's going to be made within twenty-four hours, by next Wednesday or Thursday. And so I would ask everyone to call their state representative, Scott Wolfsleger, uh, well, state senator and state representative Scott Wolfsleger, Kurt Schering, and tell them we absolutely oppose this. Even if you're not sure as to how this would impact us, which I can assure you would be negative on our income tax collection, very negative. We're taking what is entitled to the city and we are putting it in the hands of the state. But let's say that you're not quite sure of the, your position on it. Just the fact that they're slipping it into a budget bill with the state of Ohio is a real, real sneaky move. And so at least urge your state representative and your state, uh, senator to, uh, have a full vetting and a full hearing and pass it as a separate piece of legislation. And I'm very confident that if it went in as a separate piece of legislation, it wouldn't get approved. Because there'd be too much pressure. So as, as we're working together here on improving our grade school system and how the, the work that you do with all our students here and agree to all the work you've done in the city as a school teacher. I mean, we've got a great community, we want to continue to work with each other. Can always agree on, on our method, but our mission and our goal is the same. But I urge everybody to call your state representative, Kurt Schering, the state senator, Scott Wolfsleger, uh, tonight. Uh, we're early to our order.
What House Bill number is that?
That is House Bill.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. And urge them to take that, those two pieces of legislation, uh, of what has, um, two components to, to remove it from the budget bill. Please remove it.
They took the inheritance, then they're taking this.
Absolutely.
So.
In general.
I don't know what you're having to find.
So go ahead and ask.
Yeah, so, so really, when you look at the government funds you've taken away, that we were, we were at a highest of just over $600,000. And it dropped to like 350.
Maybe they needed to fix your website.
We were on track to that.
Yeah, you can have, we'll, we'll use copy and we'll, we'll send it out together, write some notes on it.
Okay.
This is for the, this is for the state to administer the tax. So they would send it back to us eventually, but we wouldn't have control of how they're administering our local businesses. We wouldn't have that enforcement.
You have something for administration costs too, like.
I believe there's a percent.
Why would they take the local control away?
Yeah, and they're taking away the local control.
It's like government's doing.
It's the first step. It's the first step down the path that we do not follow.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. Reverend Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you for the compliments and part of you and contractor guys work really hard. Knock that out. We'll wrap up tomorrow. I want to touch on our taping program too. Saving a number of streets has here about $8,000 worth. And we've got probably about half the catch basins and concrete curbs, well, associated all done. Got enough of that done that the contractors mobilizing, there's a milling machine tomorrow or Wednesday, and we're gonna start paving streets by the end of the week.
Awesome.
By the end of the week, most likely, Orion and all, some of the others in northern part of the city, some of those pop.
Thank you. That's great. Mr. Viorio.
Thank you, although I would prefer to be a member.
I know, I would already remember nonetheless. We have a lot of former members in the administration staff now, so. Okay. Or have it.
I'll be the captain of Monday here, so fair work there. But in regards to the portico project, for those of you that haven't seen the landscape design plan, it's available. I have it. And we have some information there, like the project engineer today on the portico itself. He expects that he will have a bid pack to us the next week. And then we will go through some steps on how to move that forward, but I wanted to let you know that it is progressing and we're getting near that launch point. The solar signs, which are strewn have been ordered, they should be delivered shortly. The poles that you wanted, decorative and non-decorative, but the classical plaque or pomegranate. So we will need input as to where you want those. First, we know John Robbins with the installation project for us. The, in collaboration with fire department, we are going to be engaging a company to analyze our phone billings for the last 10 years. Did this 10 years ago. When I was on council, I don't remember it yet, but apparently they found lots of savings and ways to kind of reduce our phone operations, even though we intend to be rolling out a new phone platform network later on this year. It's still warrant us to have this inventory done, phones that are, phone lines that are into the city and ways to reduce those costs before we hand it over and implement a new platform. So this would be much more efficient, rather than just taking the, just take architecture, transporting, transferring it into the system and then having the same, you know, we've got too many phone numbers to make this or that. This will help us clean that up, so it's a good move. I pay the finance director for that collaborative asset. We also started a, a printer-copier inventory process by department, purpose of which is to analyze how printers and copiers are used in our network and to more efficiently allocate those resources to where they're needed. And secondly then, to give leverage that now collectively in this central plan, so to speak, with vendors to give the city the best pricing. Presently, in the past, we've done this on a departmental, departmental basis, there's no way to leverage a big corporation. If you give us the best pricing, there's no competition because somebody's buying one break. By executing it across all departments in the entire city, maybe we can maximize more savings.
Sounds like a smart plan.
It is quite.
Those are, first of all, those two, the phones and the copiers, they're always on the budget. We're wondering what's up, so I really appreciate you. And our idea is to save money and you're leading the way.
So our companies, which like internet phones, is saving a ton of money. It's not making a commercial for real.
Well, the, the direction that we're moving with bids, the proposals that I've obtained is towards a voiceover greater than protocol, a hosted solution. But the consultant that we have engaged is reviewing those options for us to know this determiner, which would be the best way. So just as much as you can talk.
That is true. Let's not get carried.
We want to hear all the positive things going on around here.
Thank you.
Reverend, any comments?
I do. Tomorrow, the civil service commission will meet. We will schedule events, promotion, CM, sergeant's promotion, and review dispatch and consent in the very near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's a comment I need. If anybody get a chance to go to Wolfers, my pleasure to do that and whether you have them in the city. A lot of tradition, Cam is coming up to North Canyon. It's a wonderful restaurant we have that in there. And Jam's a great guy and working some issues to have that zone for him to have that built in. Hopefully supported by our residents here in the community. It's a good thing to work here. So, good to see the Wolfers captain. Enjoy the visit.
Doug Olssleger. Yeah, this was on my desk. One of the last things to remove the dogwood city signs, police people changed their patch.
Wow.
Again, the dogwood trees still are our city trees, don't get carried away with that, but they did change their patch there and we were talking about this. So my thinking, we're leaving just North Canyon, just a class. Police in North Canyon, I don't spend the eagle, because nice job.
There's no meeting next, Monday, July 3rd, if it works on a Tuesday, or last week, or break, will be July 10th, 2017, in the council meeting. So with that, do I have most of the terms? Second.
Soretta.
Yes.
Fonte.
Yes.
And then, I guess, to adjourn.
Thank you. With that, we'll write in more discussion committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June 26, 2017, around here about 8:50, 50, 51. Okay, Reverend, please call Rome.
Fonte.
Here.
Fonte.
Here.
Clarence.
Here.
And Soretta.
Here.
Reverend Soretta.
Okay, thank you. With that, we have finance, property, chairman, editor.
Well, we had a chance to talk about this briefly last week. We have legislation in front of us relative to the improvements on the outside of the building. Had you want to talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, there were a few questions that were raised by Tom and Phil. The last time, I wanted to make sure it addresses to our country satisfaction in regards to the fascia, which is the exterior sides of the building. The question involved, what kind of warranty would come of that? That comes with a 10-year warranty. The soffit, the soffit is, when you look at this ceiling here, that extends out on the wall, that's the soffit outside. That is not exposed to the elements, but that will be painted or treated on, like being worked to match what we're doing on the fascia. And, but since we only need one coat there instead of two, since it's not exposed to the elements, we're just trying to match the color. That would define, now the contractor believes that based on their experience, that they have seen that the fascia will last well beyond 10 years. They guarantee it for 10. And the soffit will last indefinitely because there's no UV exposure to it.
That's good.
Another question that was raised was, is there any facility in the area that was similarly treated and need to review? And the answer is that, is that there is. In Beachwood, Ohio, the point east condominiums have been done this way. And if you go to their, if you go online and look at this facility and see how they treat it if you want. Or, you know, if you want to go to Beachwood, I wanted to go weekend, but maybe if I can fit it, but it's still, so. Question three was, when did this project begin? We are looking at if all the, our plans are well, we can start this project July 11th. How long will it take? Final question, how long will it take? Please. The answer is, if one crew is willing to, it'll take about three to four weeks. Contractors, we can try to mobilize more than one crew and that would cut the time to estimate about.
Sounds very important.
Thanks for your work on this and we're excited for you.
If you could, if the council so desires, I would like to see it on July 10th.
So that would get an emergency?
Yes, we have to do. Would you be putting some new letters on the front of the building too, or straight painting or changing the color?
Well, our intent, we can take the letters down and we want to make sure we get fantastic seal with this treatment and that there aren't any possibilities where corrosion could, could start again.
Right.
And then as far as that goes, as far as the sign, in discussions as it relates to the, the re-landscaping in front, to put a sign alongside, if you have a price park or if you have it the other places that did more aesthetically fits in than that. Those letters will be retained. Now, how they were affixed up there is anyone's guess 47 years ago. So how they're gonna come off, I'm not quite sure. Does not try to do their best to get them off, but at least not in the interest of them to possibly.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got down to 24 to 25. There's a little stop for them slightly.
Well, it's 24 to 50 is how much it is, around 24 to 55.
I'll need John now. I would appreciate that. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Any details? Any questions?
Fonte. Yes. Clarence.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
That was a lot. Seven to four.